Greetings brothers and sisters, I'm Professor Spira. And I hope you have all been doing well since the last time I've had a chance to make a video, do a Q and A. Been really busy, I'm actually working on finishing my dissertation, which is on the culture of jazz education. And maybe sometime I'll talk a little bit more about that. It's a PhD in ethnomusicology, which is a culture of music making, or music making culture, it's kind of an anthropology of music if you will. But what I wanted to talk about now, while I got a moment to make a quick video is, first, I want to share a very helpful study tool that I want to make sure everybody that's plugged into me understands really how to use it. It's very simple, but you know, I see a lot of people on the forum sometimes, and they'll start discussing things. And oftentimes, people won't really have Eric's, what Eric's had to say right. They'll try to summarize what they think they remembered, what he was talking about, and all this kind of stuff. And then, but it won't be on point. And I've always made a practice of quoting what Eric had to say, or quoting what Brother Air had to say, or you know, just quoting people. And then, just because you quote them doesn't mean you have to agree with everything that's being said, but use that as a jumping off point for a discussion. So that there's no, you know, there's no questions, you know, there's no guessing. You know, you take the guessing out of it. And I like to, you know, I like to see studious folks, you know, that's real sharp. And there's some study tools and some approaches that we can use, I think, to elevate the discussion, to elevate our study. Like I said, part of a good critical analysis of anything is, first, you have to start with the source material. You know, and in this case, source material is, you know, what Arnold Eric had to write. And then, you know, then you kind of discuss. And that's sort of what I did with the annotated version. Here, we have the original text that Eric wrote. And then, where I find it necessary, you know, I contribute with a little bit of conversation, you know, but that's the, what you do in a, some kind of critical, you know, monograph of some sort. So, there is a discussion going on about vinegar. And what's nice about that, I got the, this is the PDF version of the annotated Mucusous Diet. But what's nice about the electronic, I mean, obviously, it's great to have the paperback version. If it were me, I would want to have PDF version as well as the P, the paperback version, or Kindle version, but you know, I, I have Kindle, Kindle versions available. I still like PDF, I'm kind of a fan of PDFs. But what you want to do is, if you want to search for a particular topic, or a particular word, if you know what word you're looking for, and you hit Ctrl F. So I hit Ctrl F down here. And you see up here toward the top right, there's a little find box that comes up. And now, depending on which version of Adobe Reader you have, or whatever reader you're using, the find function might be someplace different. But, so there was, in the forum, there's been a discussion about vinegar going on. And I don't think anybody has really quoted Eric to really, like, what did Eric have to say about vinegar? And so, I thought I would take you guys on a little study session now. And we will kind of go through the book and look and see what he had to say. And at the same time, try to show you this very simple and quick study tool. This is an easy way for you to go and find direct quotes from Eric. It just takes like two seconds to open up the document, type in a keyword, find a quote. And in doing, in that process, you're getting deeper and deeper into the text, you know, because you're, you've, there's something specific that you want to find. And you're like, okay, let me go find it. Now, of course, in a paperback version, there is an index in the back. You have the table of contents, so you can kind of go through and fish in that way. With this electronic versions, it's a lot easier. And of course, if you're going to be quoting or putting quotes, whether you're in the forum, or you're going to, you know, sharing the good news of Arnold Eric in some other place, on your, you know, your Facebook wall, or you're out at a blog, or something like that. This is a very efficient way of being able to do that. So, again, I hit Ctrl F. And I already typed in, typed in vinegar here. So let's see where vinegar is talked about. So this first instance is the list, which I'll kind of get past that real quick. So, let me get down here, this is, so we are in the section. So sometimes you want to go up and you can say, okay, well, this is Transition Diet 1, Lesson #15. And so you go down and see that vinegar, the word vinegar is highlighted here. And what do we got to say? So, talking about dressings, "You make an oil dressing according to your taste, if desired, using lemon juice instead of vinegar for flavoring purposes only." So Eric never specifically says that vinegar is something that's bad, but it is strongly implied, and I'll show you how strongly in a moment. But so first, we have, "Instead of vinegar, use lemon juice for flavoring purposes only." Now, this is a space where in the annotated version, I added a little something in the margins to this discussion. And so, this is my commentary, "Eric is against vinegar, although he does not explicitly say so. Twice, he mentions that lemon juice should be used instead of vinegar for dressings. Some people believe that vinegar or fermented foods become alkaline after eating, yet Eric suggests that only acidic foods, the acidic foods naturally become alkaline during digestion are raw, tree-ripened acid fruits. Although vinegar does not leave behind mucus, it is certainly acid-forming. It is also a common relapse trigger that causes a mucusless diet practitioner to crave worse mucus formers, thus it is best to avoid vinegar." So, that was something that I fairly early on just got away from vinegar. And I know there's going to be a lot of people that say, well, it's healthy, or I've done it, I've used it like this, and all that, and that's fine. I mean, I, before I got into the diet, I used to drink green tea with apple cider vinegar and honey every day, because I was, you know, I was taking ginger supplements, you know, that was my attempt at trying to lose weight, you know, trying to be healthy, or whatever. I still got sick all the time, I still, you know, because it didn't have anything to do with that. You know, that was one of those, it was like supposed to be a cure-all. So, you know, I would have, you know, daily migraine headaches and all kinds of mucus problems. And I was supposed to be able to drink this tea and it'd take care of it. Well, that wasn't the case, I had to stop eating pus and mucus-forming foods, cleanse my body, do some, get into the mucusous diet, including the fasting and everything. And that's when those mucus issues were taken care of. But not, you know, vinegar didn't help anything before that. And once I got into the diet, I noticed that anytime I used something that had vinegar in it, whether it was some kind of condiment or something like that, it would trigger a desire for me to eat more mucus. You know, some kind of like, oh man, let me, you know, and it would make me want to either go back to pus sometimes, especially in the early days, because I would have that association from, you know, the ketchups and the mustards, and you know, mayonnaises, and all that kind of stuff. You know, all those sauces have that vinegar, and it's a very pungent, you know, one of the things that I, ways that I look at that kind of thing is, if it's not something that I would just eat or drink by itself, then it's probably not something that I should add and put into my body, even if it's diluted in something else, you know. So that's sort of how I look at vinegar. I wouldn't, I wouldn't take a glass of straight, like, apple cider vinegar or something like that, and enjoy just drinking it down. Although I can drink down a glass of apple juice, or a glass of orange juice, or some water with a little bit of lemon juice in it, you know, like, those are things I can drink. But I would be sickened if I were to just drink straight vinegar. So that sort of, that kind of tells me that that's something that's, you know, that at least for me personally, it's not the right way to go. Now, has there been a couple times over the years where I've had some kind of craving, and went back and maybe got into some ketchup, or got into, you know, some kind of, something like that? Yeah. And the other people I know that has practiced mucusous diet a long time, they've also done things like that. That's part of relapses, that's part of just going along, transitioning. But, you know, those were short-term kind of, kind of things. And they're always, you know, Dr. Morris even talked about one time when he had fasted, and he was in the middle of a fast, and out of the blue, he had this craving for, I think it was Reese's Peanut Butter Cups or something. And he went and got them, ate them like once, and that was it. And he got back into fasting, you know, so these things happen. These aren't, this isn't some excuse to go eat some crazy stuff, but just don't feel guilty when it happens. But we have to start off with the right perspective on some of these foods. So it's not like, and this is where the balance, I think, comes is, where do you put your mentality? When you know there's something that you need to get off of, or that it would be optimal to get off of, yet you still crave it, or you're still using it, then, you know, you need to be gentle with yourself and not be hard on yourself. Yet at the same time, know that this is, this is just not something that I want to be doing for years and years and years. You know, so you don't have to beat yourself up, but practice the dynamics of the system, which will allow you to continue to move forward, so that you can get to periods where you avoid those things. Now, as far as dressings, we, you know, in the early days, I used, there's two vinegar-free dressings, that's like store-bought dressings that you can find. And I use those a lot, a lot of people I know with mucusous diet uses those. If you're hardcore staunch raw foodist, you're, you know, don't avoid, you know, don't listen to what I just said, you know, that doesn't apply to you then. If you make all your own dressings and you're super staunch with it, then great. But for me, I mean, I wouldn't have probably made it if I didn't have, if I didn't find those two, it's only two flavors of this Annie's, you can look for them, it says vinegar-free dressing. And so that was a big, that was a big deal, because that was a big deal for me to get off of the dressings that had vinegar. And then I found the vinegar-free. And it really started to clean up, just making that switch, just really getting off of the vinegar, helped me to start clean, clean up my palate. And getting away from the vinegar was a big, played a big role in helping me to clean up my palate. So that I changed the things that I were craving, you know, instead of craving stuff that was associated with that vinegary, acid-forming kind of stuff, I started craving things that were more, you know, more, a little more natural, you know, instead of the, some kind of pungent sauce, now I just want some tomato sauce on things. And so, so it's, or, you know, I did go long periods with the lemon juice and a little bit of extra virgin olive oil or something on top of a salad. So you know, I've experimented with a lot of different variations over, you know, the 13 years I've practiced a diet. So I've kind of checked out all these different, these different things. But, so let's, let's keep going. Let's see, so that, so I hit the previous, that took me back up to that original thing. Now vinegar's talked about a couple other times. And now, I'm about to show you what I mean by, Eric really, 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 Eric really doesn't think that vinegar is something that we should be dealing with. So if you keep hitting the next, then down here again, Eric says homemade mayonnaise that uses lemon instead of vinegar is not especially harmful during the transition diet and can be enjoyed, if you, and can be used if you enjoy it. Then tomatoes cooked into a sauce or a good canned tomato soup mixed with the dressing may help you enjoy the transition diet. Now, I focused in on that. I focused it, like, tomato sauce became a staple of almost every vegetable meal, had tomato sauce involved, you know, I just made that a thing. And it satisfied me, it gave me that, you know, the vegetables, just enough taste, tang, or whatever, you know, just gave it enough of that thing that I wanted, to just keep me satisfied, and make me start craving vegetables. You know, the, I mean, the tomato sauce was like an important tool for me in the early days when I was getting off of, you know, the terrible diet and the terrible things I was on. It was like the one thing that I really liked was, about the whole process, was tomato sauce. And I ended up getting into a thing where I really, you know, started making some, you know, I called them the gourmet tomato sauces, like I was making some serious sauce. And I am going to start talking a little bit about that in the future, a little more as we get closer to. I know a lot of people have been asking me about the, when is the menu book, the recipe book going to be done? And I'm working on it, I'm sorry guys, I know I've been saying for the past like couple years that I was going to be getting it done, but you know, there's been a lot, a lot of stuff going on. And obviously, I'm, you know, I'm trying to finish a 400-page dissertation, so it's kind of where some of those creative energies are going at the moment. But it's on there, it's on the list. In the meantime, there's going to be some other things that are coming out. And I'm going to start putting some, some more recipes and things out there, but. So yeah, so now, back to this homemade mayonnaise now. Eric, you know, Eric actually, he actually suggests, whether it's Eric or if it's Fred Hirsch, because there is some overlap, that's some analysis. We can talk about that sometime, or actually go through and show you parts of the Mucusous Diet that are unquestionably written by Fred Hirsch, because it, all of a sudden, it refers to Arnold Eric. And it's, and it seems almost just like the text, but it's actually sort of an editor's note. And I think there's certain sections that may have, the entire section may have been added by Fred Hirsch. So there's, there's actually a bit of a collaborative effort there on Fred Hirsch's part. And of course, there is, there's, with versions, if you go back to the 1929, 24 version, which is the most common version of the Mucusous Diet that you can find if you get an older version, you go back to that, and then you trace it through the 50s, 60s, 70s, and 80s. By 94, there's been quite a, there's quite a number of changes from that original one that Fred has done over the years, you know, sort of little, little updates. And maybe sometime I'll go through that, and we can take a look at some of those changes that are very obvious, once you, once you know what to look for, and you're comparing the different versions. But what I say in this note, it is advisable not to use mayonnaise that contains eggs or vinegar. Today, vegetarian egg-free mayonnaise is available, although it is hard to find without vinegar in it. Overall, I've found that using sugar-free fresh tomato sauce during the transition is a more sustainable and much cleaner condiment. So in the original Mucusous Diet Healing System, Eric has eggs in that. And so, that's, that's telling me how bad Eric thinks vinegar is. Because he was, he says, "Instead of using, in a mayonnaise, in a homemade mayonnaise where you do use, where you could use egg, instead of using vinegar, use lemon juice." Now, let's, let's, to put that into perspective, let's take a look at how bad Eric thinks egg is. So we hit the previous, and let's get up here to... This is what I wanted, okay, "Eggs, eggs are even worse than meats. This is because not only do eggs have too high protein quantities, qualities, but they also contain a gluey property much worse than meat, and are therefore very constipated, quite more so than meat. Hard-boiled eggs are less harmful because the gluey qualities are destroyed. The white of eggs make a perfect glue." And there's other times throughout the Mucusous Diet where Eric will bring up the prospect of eggs and just how terrible they are. So, so again, in the, in the original Mucusous Diet, in a very extreme, in a very extreme circumstances, where people are just really, really filthy, really having trouble, you know, in the very early parts of someone's transition, that's something that can be used, or you know, within, or that he had suggested to use. I don't suggest using that anymore, I think there's a lot of other, there's better options in 2015, things have evolved a bit. But if somebody, if somebody were to do it, I know that there is a large number of people that are, that are kind of into the Mucusous Diet, that I think in the Spanish-speaking world, I think they've kind of taken to that, a very liberal interpretation of the transition, where the, you know, the eggs, the egg-based mayonnaise is actually something that's, that's used kind of frequently. But the, the, you know, you really look at what Eric's talking about, I mean, he does not want anybody to stay on that, on that kind of stuff for any length of time. You know, all these pus-forming eggs is, you're probably the worst, like you said, even worse than meat. And for Eric, I mean, eggs is even worse than dairy, than milk products. But it's all bad, it's, it's all bad, so. So, I think that'll be it for this installment, just wanted to kind of do a quick video, it's been a little while. And, you know, I always appreciate everybody's, you know, having some really great discussions out there on the forum, and spreading the word about, about the lifestyle, about the Mucusous Diet. And it's really about doing this work, like I always say. And, you know, we have to, it's good to analyze, and I like, like I said, take a look at, at the book, take a look and just see what, you know, what did Eric have to say? If you have the annotated, you can see what I had to say. But just going back to that source material is, is important. And, and so, so yeah, so that, and that's my, my piece on vinegar. I don't think I'd really talk too much about it. And it's something that comes up every once in a while. And it's just, it's one of the things on the list for me personally, when I'm working with people, I want to get people off of vinegar as soon as possible. It's, like I said, when it, if it does come back in some kind of relapse, then that's what that is, you know, that's, that's almost its own thing. You know, the Mucusless Diet Healing System Relapse Periods? That's its own discussion, you know, that, sort of with its own rules, almost. I mean, in terms of, that's, that's where practicing the best you can, and doing the best you can when you have the motivation and you, and you're in the groove, you want to do the best you can then, so that when things do get hard, a little later down the road, when all of a sudden you start craving something that you didn't think you would ever crave again in your life, and it comes back, it doesn't scare you, and you know how to deal with it systematically within the context of the Mucusous Diet Healing System. I see too many people get caught unawares, out of the blue, they think that they are more advanced than they really are, and all of a sudden, here comes, here comes this craving, back after two or three years, I'm still here, you didn't clean me out. And then, and they're dumbfounded, and some of them go back, to, you know, go all the way back, you know, leave the diet, or go find, you know, some other, some other thing, when it's not that you need another system, you need to practice the system. You know, you need to get into, okay, what's the best way for me to transition in a gradual systematic manner? And, you know, and I'm not saying take, you know, take forever, and it's good to have an attitude with an intensity to cleanse, you know, and to keep moving forward. But, you know, there's also, you know, being honest with where you are, you know, being able to look in the mirror and really be honest about where we are, you know, physiologically, and that's hard for some folks to do, because it's kind of hard to look in the mirror, and then look on TV, or just look at humanity and see what we've done to ourselves. It can be, it's rough. And, but, we got, I think we have to deal with that in order to move forward. We have to be able to do that, to really take a look, a hard look, and be honest with ourself wherever we're at, and at the same, and through that, that's an expression of love, you know, that's a loving expression to not, you know, to be able to be honest with yourself and not get depressed, not feel bad, not... You know, sometimes we got to work through that, you know, a lot of us got to work through a lot of emotional issues that's sort of tied to that, to move forward, and blockages that hold us back physiologically, that do contribute to cravings, to certain cravings, you know, emotional blockages. You know, some people would say spiritual blockages, you know, all of that is pertinent, relevant to understand. And, so that's, that little bit of wisdom on that is just, like I was, I was talking to, talking about that today, you got to love yourself first and foremost. I mean, a lot of people love everything and everybody around them except themselves. And we're not talking about like a narcissism where you're in, there's a difference of loving yourself and being in love with your own image. Now, that's narcissism, that's, that's something else. I'm talking about an unconditional love for yourself, where when you eat, you know, you, if you, you know if you're taking this thing seriously, and if you're doing the best that you can. I mean, that was the one thing I did take from sports, when I played football, you know, the coach would always say, "At the end of the day, after practice, after the game, if you can go look yourself in the mirror and be honest with yourself, that I gave 100%, that I gave 110%, I did the best that I can do." I mean, if you can do that, then that's, that's, that's it. I mean, you did, you're doing the best that you can do with the circumstances you have, with the money that you have, with the information that you have, with the family that you have. I mean, you just do the best that you can do in any given situation at any time. But the constant has to be an unconditional love of oneself first. Because, you know, a lot, a lot of people, they're real hard on themselves, or they, or they sort of have this hate, this hatred for themselves that they haven't dealt with yet, but they, you know, they love their children, you know, they love their significant other. But, or they love their work, you know, but when it gets, when they get home and they get by themselves, you know, locked away in a bathroom, looking at themselves in the mirror, it's, it's a different story. So what I try to impart to people is, you know, you got to love yourself, you got to be gentle with yourself, you know, be empathetic, you know, to yourself. I'm real, you know, I'm real empathetic with this diet, because this is not, it's just not easy. You know, I've never said that it's, it's easy, you know, the methods are simple. The logic is simple, you know, the diet is simple, it's a simple diet. But it's not always easy for us to undo the complexities that we have constipated our minds with. We've constipated ourselves, not only physically, but mentally. And mentally, we got so many theories and concepts and all this stuff, and we're not normally taught how to think, and how to question and critically analyze things in an objective fashion, since we're not really given those tools, a lot of us, you know, we're just kind of regurgitating. You know, we're just kind of regurgitating what we read somewhere. You know, that little process I was talking about before was if you're going to quote something, you know, you quote it, but then you contribute something to it. So you say, okay, well, this is what Eret had to say. And then this is my, this is my experience. And my experience either correlates with what Eret had to say or it doesn't. And it's fine either way, you know, that's a objective analytical discussion where you can say, okay, well, this is, this is what Eret had to say. This is what Professor Spirit had to say. This is what Brother Air had to say. And this has been my experience, you know, doing, you know, you know, doing whatever, you know, with, within that realm or that context. I mean, it's kind of like with, with lemon juice enemas where people want to say negative, negative things about it, but they never done it. So you had to sort of go to the people that have done it for some length of time and then see what they had to say about it. And, uh, so, so yeah, so that's kind of how that is. But so it was always a pleasure talking with you. And, uh, like I said, I hope to, you know, I want to be getting back to doing some more videos and doing some stuff, but just keep on doing your thing, keep on transitioning. You know, keep on pursuing the highest levels of health that we can. And we will transform this world. We will transform this universe and, uh, clean it up. So thank you guys for tuning in. I'll talk with you later. Peace, love and breath.